Move that, uh. Items number two and three, how about agenda for today be dispensed with the Mr. Chair?
It's been moved by Councillor De Castro, any second, seconded by Councillor Apol Bakay.
Second.
For the to dispense item numbers two and three expedited our session today, any objection? Hearing none, the said two items are dispensed. Madam Secretari, please conduct the call.
The Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor of Si Antonio Miguel W. Perez. The Presiding Officer, Pro Tempore, Councillor Apolonia G. Bakay.
Present.
The Majority Floor Leader, Councillor Alfred Felix I. Castro.
Present.
The Minority Floor Leader, Councillor Sirobe Radok. Councillor, Councillor Carolyn D. Season.
Present.
Councillor Michelle Es. Segundera.
Present.
Councillor Joselito O. Fontelera.
Present.
Councillor Verna S. De Rabago.
Present.
Councillor Oscar A. Bowling.
Present.
Councillor Probit Iranoy.
Present.
Councillor Dahlia M. De Leon. Exupisio members, diga ng mga barangay President Raúl B. Bakay.
Present, present.
Panunod sa Federação ng sanggungang kabataan President Labor D. B. Bernabe.
Present.
Thirteen members of this August body responded to the call, sir.
Thirteen members. Again, per attendance, we will now address official business. Approval of the agenda before we, do we have any unassigned business?
We have no unassigned business for today, sir.
How about from the body, any concerns or unassigned business? Wala po, Councillor De Castro.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I respectfully move that agenda for today's session be approved by the August bodies.
Yes, we move Castro Chairman on those rules, any second.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Councillor Iranoy, for the approval of the set agenda, any amendments? Hearing none, the set agenda is approved. So next item, Madam Secretari.
Adoption of the journals and minutes of the sanggungang panunod regular sessions, seven November twenty-three and December one, twenty-twenty-one.
Any motion, Councillor Segundera, is recognized?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of the journal and minutes of the SP regular sessions held on November twenty-three, twenty-twenty-one, and December one, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, it's been moved by Councillor Segundera, Juri Second.
Second.
President and, uh, Councillor Rabago for the adoption of said journal and minutes, any amendments? Hearing none, the seven minutes are hereby adopted. Next item, Madam Secretari.
Privilege question hour.
Any privileged speeches from the body? Any concerns, issues you wanna raise? Uh, just, uh, for the record, uh, we have information that, uh, uh, the, the crematorium in Tangkarang opened, uh, letter one. But, uh, I also had information na pituntahan ito ng licensing. Uh, licensing officer natin si Sirka Pitlen na, naanap na requirements if the operation is illegal or not. So just for the information of the body, uh, we might have to, to act on the issue or maybe monitor what's happening regarding the Tangkarang crematorium. So that's all from me. So any other privileged speeches? Wala na po, we move forward, Madam Secretari.
I proceed to the reference of business under proposed ordinance, uh, proposed ordinance for first reading. Under proposed ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-seven, amending section three of City Ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-One dash thirteen, otherwise known as an ordinance, amending section three of Article One, section three of Article eleven, and section four of Article fifteen of Ordinance Number Two Thousand Five dash twenty-two, otherwise known as the Comprehensive Transportation and Traffic Ordinance of the City of Alaminos.
Um, do we have guests for today, Madam Secretari? Para unahin na natin sila, para hindi sila masyadong matagal maganda.
Sir, we have only one guest for the items and which are calendared for today's session. Uh, our city engineer, engineer Ruben N. Kamba for the items number two on the number three of the under proposed resolutions.
Sige, paki before we proceed on the first ordinance, sa proposed ordinance, babasa na rin ng resolutions para mauna na si engineer.
Under proposed resolutions, we have the first item, under proposed resolution number Twenty-Twenty-One dash one-five-seven, granting development permit to Simon Syrel Fuel Gasoline Refilling Station at Barangay Bulonay, the city. Under item number two, under proposed resolution number Twenty-Twenty-One dash one-five-eight, approving the additional partial list of specific projects funded out of the Special Purpose Appropriations Fund amounting to two million six hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred sixteen pesos and ninety-four centavos, and a twenty percent development fund amounting to two hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty pesos of the city of Alaminos for calendar year twenty-twenty-one. And I think under item number three, we have under proposed resolution number Twenty-Twenty-One dash one-five-nine, approving the additional partial list of specific projects funded out of the Special Purpose Appropriations Fund amounting to one million two hundred twenty-two thousand, eighty-four pesos and eighty-eight centavos, and the twenty percent development fund amounting to one million four hundred sixty-one thousand six hundred seventy-six pesos and twelve centavos of the city of Alaminos for calendar year twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, uh, shall we suspend the rules?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, I move that the tablah rules, uh, be suspended to accommodate however speakers to elaborate on the proposed resolution and other matters, Mr. Chair.
It has been moved by Councillor De Castro, seconded by Councillor Raúl Bakay for the suspension of the rules. Madam Secretari, please acknowledge again our guest for item number twenty-three.
For items number two and three, under the proposed resolutions, we have our city engineer, engineer Ruben N. Kamba.
Magandang hapon po, engineer.
Sir, magandang hapon po naman, uh, siguro ito, uh, ito po 'yung mga partial list under a special purpose appropriation, mounting to, uh, uh, two million six hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred sixteen point ninety-four, and the twenty percent, uh, development fund amounting to two hundred forty-nine, nine hundred eighty. I think, uh, siguro ma, uh, may, may kanya-kanya naman kayong poobka, so any, uh, any question regarding the partial list?
Siguro, engineer, pag i-dabasa niyo po 'yung unang partial list, 'yung total niya, tama po ba 'yung mga total nito ngayon?
Yes po, tama po.
Okay po, 'yung sa number three po, pwede pong pa, for the record, banggitin lang po 'yung total, 'yung one million two hundred twenty-two thousand?
One million?
Sa number three po, two hundred twenty-two thousand? Hello?
Hello po, hello po.
Ah, dun po sa unang partial list, uh, okay na po yon, 'yung sa isa pa pong partial list, pwede pong babanggit po nung mga total. 'Yung one, one million two-two-two, tsaka 'yung one million four-six-one, tama po ba?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, your honor.
Yes, engineer, pwedeng pabasa lang po nung ano, total po, para po, makita po natin kung tama po.
Uh, special for po sa appropriation po, amounting to...
Tama po ba, one million two hundred twenty-two thousand, eighty-four pesos and eighty-eight centavos?
Yes po, tama po yon.
At tsaka development fund, uh, one million four hundred six-one thousand six hundred seventy-six point twelve?
Yes po, tama po.
Okay po, so these are barangay projects, any questions? May katanungan po ba? Wala po, or city engineer, uh, wala pong katanungan na ating mga konsel. Uh, marami pong salamat, uh, supag lagi pong pagkata.
Sakala, sir, lahat po yon, may mga street light po, marami nga niya mga street lights.
Yes po, mga street light po natin sa ibang ibang barangay, no, 'yung pangalawa po.
Yes po.
Opo. So, wala namang katanungan, marami pong salamat, sir.
Thank you rin po.
Papabasa ko sana sa'yo lahat, pero masyadong maapananan eh.
Matatagalan tayo, sir.
Thank you po, insinubet, thank you po.
Thank you, thank you rin po.
Okay, uh, Madam Secretari, we now lift the suspension of the rules. What is the, uh, regarding item number one under proposed ordinances, sino 'yung proponent nito, Ma'am Secretari? Any, 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 ang ginagaling na kailangan?
Galing, may endorsement po galing kay mayor, sir, from our todas, the Federation, regarding sa pagpapalit ng pintura ng sidecar.
Uh, okay, ah, yes, 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 I think this is. So I think we just schedule this for committee hearing. Uh, Councillor Raúl Bakay. Shall we schedule this, uh, January, January second week, maybe? Ma'am Luz, naglag ba ako?
Medyo, sir, medyo, medyo kabigil-kabigil.
Yeah, hello?
I'm, uh, schedule the committee hearing regarding the proposed ordinance amending three of City Ordinance Number Two Thousand Twenty-One, dash thirteen, other known, otherwise known as an ordinance amending section three, Article One, section three of Article eleven and section four of Article fifteen of Ordinance Number Two Thousand Five, dash twenty-two, other known as a comprehensive transportation traffic ordinance of the city of Alaminos on January ten.
January ten, okay, January ten, what time?
Ten, ten o'clock, Mr. Chair.
Okay, uh, Councillor Raúl Bakay, schedule sa committee hearing on January ten, ten o'clock in the morning. So ordered, Madam Secretari, please check, I think we already amended this traffic ordinance, so five dash twenty-two and the new one, we have a new traffic ordinance, so let's check kung ano 'yung ordinance 'yung ina amend talaga. I believe this was an issue by the tricycle operators last time we had the public hearing at the Plaza Inditavaganza. So moving forward, uh, regard, Madam Secretari, regarding the the proposed solution, the development permit to Simon Syrel Fuel Gasoline Refilling Station at Barangay Bulonay, the city. Uh, Councillor Georgia Fontelera, shall we also schedule a committee hearing? Councillor Fontelera?
Yes, Mr. Chair, behalf of the committee chair, I just move that this matter be required to a committee hearing with the arrangement of the committee chair, Georgia Fontelera, to make the proper scheduling of this matter, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so it is coming to the Majority Floor Leader, seconded by, uh, any second, seconded by Councillor. Uh, scheduled the said, uh, resolution second week of January for further action. So ordered, regarding items number two and three, Majority Floor Leader, uh, Councillor Oscar Bowling, shall we include the two items in the business for today?
Uh, no more questions with regards to these two items, I move, I, I move that this two item be limited to the business of the day.
It's been moved by, uh, Councillor Oscar Bowling, the Chairman of Finance, to, uh, include the said two items in the business for the decision, any objection? Hearing none, the said two items are included in the business today. Next item, Madam Secretari.
Proceed to the communications received. Uh, for review, letter from Pastor Marius M. Mansano, under proposed.
Ma'am Luz, I can't hear you. Ma'am Luz, I. Ma'am Luz, di ko po.
Saan nito sa likod?
Yeah, okay na.
Okay na, sir. Tagahagi na po.
Baltaan mo na yan.
Sir, hindi pa, bago pa to, anyway, uh, now proceed to communications received, under for review, letter from Pastor Marius M. Mansano, under proposed resolution number Twenty-Twenty-One, dash one-five-six, requesting for a resolution for the establishment of a crematorium to be located within Jet Seven A Memorial Park, the Cosman Street, Barangay Palamis, the city.
Uh, Councillor Jose de Fontelera, shall we schedule, uh, ano ba to, the classification, uh, crematorium? Shall we schedule this for committee hearing, Majority Floor Leader?
Majority Floor Leader. Yes, Mr. Chair, behalf of the, uh, the committee chair, Georgia Fontelera, on this matter, Mr. Chair, I move that this matter be likewise scheduled for committee hearing.
Okay, uh, same also, so, thirty, thirty, schedules for a committee hearing regarding the said uh, proposal or resolution on the second week of January, uh, to accommodate, uh, the said request and make sure that all pertinent documents are complied with, seconded by Councillor Probit Iranoy, any objection? Hearing none, the said committee board is scheduled for January second week, so ordered, next item, Madam Secretari.
Now proceed to committee reports. The first item is the joint committee report from the dialogue held on November nineteen regarding the, uh, at, the dialogue with the maritime industry regarding the renewal of certificate of public convenience of motorboats flying the Hundred Islands National Park.
Uh, who is our chairperson for this?
Diga, Diga, sir.
Councillor Raúl Bakay, is recognized?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, the dialogue relating the renewal of certificate of public convenience of motorboat playing the Hundred Islands National Park was held on November nineteen, two thousand twenty-one. President were Councillor Oscar Bowling, Councillor Carolyn D. Season. Season also president were the representative from tourism, Coast Guard Marina, and the president of different motorboat association in Alaminos City Pangasinan. The motorboat association raised the following concern. The requirement of securing permission from Marina when sealing or buying a motorboat. The issue on the tenant's fee and to open the bank account. The committee opened that considering the major income of this operator, they were having hard time producing the amount needed for the renewal of their motorboat, with more reason that will not be able to open a bank account in amount which range from twenty-five thousand and above. Mister Miguel Season requested the representative from Marina for the second time since the leader failed to respond on the tourism office previous request to furnish the later office of copy of requirements and guidelines for renewal or registration of motorboat, so that such requirement will be posted in conspicuous place with, in the tourism office of the, for the guidance and information of the boatman. The communit, the committee suggested that boatman should be allowed to operate the IMP even the absence of the above Marina requirements as long as, as long, as long the boatman have secured their respective mayor's permit. In view of the above, the committee heard votes for the adoption of its committee report and that the proposed measure be deleted from the calendar of activities, Mr. Chair.
So, cap, ano, okay na, nag-iusapan o, naresolba na ba sa Marina o hindi pa?
Uh, ang usapan namin, ang gati hindi sila makapag-furnish start ng kopian ng guidelines for, uh, kung ano ba talaga 'yung bangababayaran at magkano. Uh, mayor's permit lang tayo, pwede ng tatakbo 'yung bangka po, mga motorboat po natin.
Uh, okay, di maganda yon, at least kahit na paano sila 'yung apresyo.
Oo, oo, oo.
Kumayag naman, kumayag naman.
Eh, wala sila magawa, Mr. Chair, kaya 'yung ang request natin, tsaka, uh, at tsaka 'yung matagal naman natin nire-requestan, ba't sila mag-implement na 'yung nire-request natin, hindi nila maibigay?
Tama, tama, pero para alam, Ren, this is public, uh, public see, wala lang ma-post yon in three conspicuous places. So anyway, uh, Councillor Raúl Bakay, Diga President, who's for the adoption of this committee report, the said matter be deleted in the calendar of activities, so, any objection? Hearing none, the said committee report is hereby adopted and, uh, said, uh, measure be, the said issue or concern be deleted from the calendar of activities. Next item, Madam Secretari. May I request the, to expedite our session, uh, if there are the chairperson reporting can up, can up to read the recommendation unless there are few issues to threshold, because we all have copies of the committee reports. So next item, Madam Secretari. Madam Secretari, are you there? Joint Committee Report for the Public Hearing held on November nineteen regarding proposed ordinance number Twenty-Twenty-One, dash one-two-two, classifying a portion of land owned by Clickford Torrendo containing an area of one thousand square meters situated at Barangay Bulonay, the city, from agriculture use, commercial use primarily for the establishment of a gas station.
Naririnig ba ako?
May I request, uh, Councillor Georgia Fontelera, but in the committee report, it's, uh, Captain Bakay, kayo po nag preside?
So...
Yung reclassification po sa Bulonay, one thousand square meters, kayo po nag preside?
Hindi, hindi ako, hindi pa ako, sir.
Okay po, so, um, Councillor Fontelera or? Councillor Fontelera or Councillor De Castro?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chair, I may just be allowed to read, uh, in view, uh, in, uh, the recommendation, this is chaired by, uh, by our chairperson, Councillor Georgia Fontelera, in view of the above, uh, the committee hereby moves to the adoption of the committee report and proposed measure be calendared for next, I, I think this is already for, I can't reading, Mr. Chair, because the second meeting was the, uh, public hearing.
Okay, okay, uh, Madam Secretari.
On the next, uh, regular session, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Madam Secretari, are all the requirements already?
Yes, sir.
Also the public hearing?
Yes po.
Okay, Councillor Alfred Felix De Castro, Majority Floor Leader, who's for the adoption of this committee report, and the said measure be calendared for third and final reading in our next regular session, any objection? Hearing none, the said committee report is hereby adopted and the said measure be calendared for third and finally reading in our next regular session. Next item, Madam Secretari.
Joint Committee Report from the Public Hearing held on November twenty-second regarding the ordinance establishing a discipline zone in the city of Alaminos Pangasinan.
Councillor Verna Rabago.
Ay, sir, na lang po ang recommendation na na, na basahin po?
Yes po, yes po.
In view of, in view of the above, the committee heard by most for the, the action of this committee report, understand?
Kailan po?
Temporary archive muna, Mr. Chair.
Ah, archive muna, okay, so... So, Councillor Verna Rabago, who's for the adoption of this committee report, and, uh, said, uh, measure be temporarily archived pending the draft, but, uh, please also include this in our agenda, uh, third week of January, so we make sure that, uh, we have progress regarding the said ordinance, any objection? Hearing none, the said committee report is hereby adopted and the said measure is archived up until January third week. So ordered, Madam Secretari, next item.
Joint Committee Report from the Public Hearing held on November twenty-seventh, twenty-second regarding proposed ordinance number Twenty-Twenty-One, dash sixteen, providing for the speed limits for, for all kinds of motor vehicles within the territorial jurisdiction of the city of Alaminos Pangasinan, imposing penalties for violation thereof and appropriating funds for.
Okay, uh, Diga President Bakay, is recognized?
Uh, Mr. Chair, in the above, in the view, in view of the above, the committee heard by most for the adoption of this committee report and the proposed measure be temporarily archived pending the identification of street in the bar, in the barangay to be included in the list of crowded street or twenty kilometer per hour speed limit zone.
Okay, uh, same motion as the previous measure, Councillor uh, Diga President Raúl Bakay, who's for the adoption of this committee report and the measure be archived, uh, pending the draft. Uh, we shall tackle this measure third week of January to make sure that we have progress with the said, any objection? Hearing none, the said committee report is hereby adopted, the said measure be archived up until third week of January. So ordered, next item, Madam Secretari.
Joint Committee Report from the Public Hearing held on November twenty-second regarding proposed ordinance number Twenty-Five, dash Twenty-Twenty-One, creating the barangay committee on disability appears in all barangays within the jurisdiction of the city of Alaminos Pangasinan.
Councillor Season is recognized, Chairperson on social welfare?
Yes, Mr. Chair, basa ko na po 'yung recommendation. In view of the above, the committee hereby moves for the adoption of its committee report and the proposed measure be calendared for second reading in our next regular session.
Okay, uh, Councillor Season moves for this, any motion, third reading ba?
Second, second, hold, guys.
Second ulit, okay, Councillor Season moves for the adoption of this committee report and the said matter be calendared for another second, for second reading in our next regular session, any objection? Hearing none, the said committee report is hereby adopted, the said measure be calendar for second reading in our next regular session. Next item, Madam Secretari.
Proceed to the business, our new business, we have the resolution of additional partial list of specific projects funded out of the Special Purpose Appropriations.
Ma'am Luz, naputol ka?
Bakit napuputol?
Ano na, baltaan mo na yan.
Hello po, naririnig niyo na, sir.
Yan na, okay na po.
Resolution approving the additional partial list of specific projects funded out of the Special Purpose Appropriations Fund amounting to two million six hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred sixteen pesos and ninety-four centavos, and the twenty percent development fund amounting to two hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty pesos of the city of Alaminos for calendar year twenty-twenty-one.
Uh, pwedeng sabay mo na, ma'am?
And for a resolution approving the additional partial list of specific projects funded out of the Special Purpose Appropriation Fund amounting to one million two hundred twenty-two thousand, eighty-four pesos and eighty-eight centavos, and the twenty percent development fund amounting to one million four hundred sixty-one thousand, six hundred seventy-six pesos and twelve centavos of the city of Alaminos for calendar year twenty-twenty-one.
Councillor Oscar Bowling, the Chairman of Finance.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, if there are no more questions with regards to these two items, uh, I move for the approval of, uh, this, uh, this resolution, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved by Councillor Oscar Bowling, any second? Seconded by?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Councillor, seconded by Councillor De Castro for the adoption of the said two resolutions, any objection? Sorry, medyo mabagal 'yung video po, please, uh, and say that if you object or you have any comments, so any objections with the said motion? No objections, so the said two, or the said two resolutions are hereby adopted, so ordered, next item.
Third and final reading of appropriation ordinance number Twenty-Twenty-One, dash zero-five, enacting the general fund annual budget for the operation of the city government of Alaminos Pangasinan for the period January first, twenty-twenty-two to December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-one, and providing appropriations therefore.
Ma'am, sabay mo na, twin resolution.
And the third and final reading of the proposed resolution number, of the resolution, confirming approving in total the proposed annual investment program pro calendar year twenty-twenty-two.
For Oscar Bowling, recognized?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, if, uh, there are no more questions, I move for the approval of these two items, Mr. Chair.
Okay, it's been moved by Councillor Oscar Bowling, seconded by the Majority Floor Leader, Councillor because I was seconded by Councillor Rabago, Councillor Iranoy, uh, for the enactment of the said ordinance and the adoption of this said resolution, any objection? Amen, any discussion, hearing none, the said ordinance enacting the general fund annual budget for the operation of the city government of Alaminos Pangasinan. of the city government of Alaminos Pangasinan for the period January one, twenty twenty-two to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two and providing appropriations therefore is hereby enact and the proposed, and the number two zero two one, uh, for confirming approving in total the proposed annual investment program calendar year twenty twenty-two is hereby adopted, any objections? Any amendments? Hearing none, the said two items are enacted and adopted. Next item, madam secretari.
Announcement reminders. Uh, we have already received the Sangguyang Pandalawigan Resolution number nine three four, nine three seven, that's twenty twenty-one, declaring resolution number twenty twenty-one, that's one eighty-eight. Entitled confirming approving in total the proposed calendar year twenty twenty-one supplemental annual investment program number five of the city of Alaminos Pangasinan. Amounting to forty-five million, eight thousand and one hundred fifty-four pesos and twenty-four centavos adapted within the conferred powers of the Sangguyang Pandonson. And also Sangguyang Pandalawigan Resolution number nine three seven, that's twenty twenty-one. Declaring appropriations ordinance number twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, that's zero four. Entitled an ordinance enacting supplemental budget number four of the local government unit of the city of Alaminos Pangasinan for the operation of the city government enacted within the conferred powers of the Sangguyang Pandonson. And item number three, Sangguyang Pandalawigan Resolution number nine three nine, that's twenty twenty-one, declaring ordinance number twenty twenty-one, that's thirty-one. Entitled an ordinance prohibiting the sale of coronavirus disease twenty nineteen vaccine in any manner scheme in the city of Alaminos Pangasinan. Providing penalties for violations thereof and for other purposes enacted within the conferred powers of the Sangguyang Pandonson. And also Sangguyang Pandalawigan Resolution number nine zero eight, that's twenty twenty-one. Declaring ordinance number twenty nineteen, that's zero nine, entitled an ordinance providing welfare services, special privileges and benefits to solo parents and their children. Appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes enacted within the conferred powers of the Sangguyang Pandonson. And lastly, Sangguyang Pandalawigan Resolution number nine oh nine, that's twenty twenty-one. Declaring ord-ordinance number twenty twenty-one, that's zero five, entitled an ordinance establishing a food bank in the city of Alaminos Pangasinan. Providing guidelines for the operations and funding thereof enacted within the conferred powers of the Sangguyang Pandonson.
Okay, congratulations to us, madaming na na-review ang ating Sangguyang Pandalawigan. Madam secretari, can I know who the proponent or the author of 'yung ordinance sa welfare services and 'yung sa prohibiting of sale coronavirus?
Uh, sa, sa solo parents, sir, si ma'am, councillor Carolyn Dison, Season. And sa coronavirus vaccine, si councillor Apolonia Bakay po.
Okay, congratulations councillor Carol and councillor Apol Bakay. Okay, sa inyong successful na itong napasang ordinance. Any other announcements from the body? Any questions, concerns, gusto pong dagdag sa ating announcements? Siguro i-announce ba kung sino nalus sa making conference, hindi pa? Hindi pa siguro. So, if there are no more questions, uh councillor Ranoy?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chair. If there are no more questions on matter to discuss, I move that the uh, session for today is adjourned.
Okay, it has been moved by councillor Ranoy, due to seconded by
Second.
De Castro for the adjournment of today's regular session. And now call this Sangguyang Pandonson, the regular session adjourned, thank you very much.
Binis transition natin ngayon, ah?
Ah? O ipatype mo 'yung ano, 'yung stream.